We'll, uh, okay, COVID, I'll give you time.
Recording in progress.
It's nine o'clock, we will start today's Douglas County Board meeting, and I'll ask everybody to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With that, um, for the record, there's a copy of the Public Meetings Act on the north wall of the legislative chambers in the back west wall here is a automatic defibrillator, in case needed for health reasons, and with that, I'll ask the clerk to call the role for the Board of Equalization.
Commissioner Borgerson is absent, Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Friend, Commissioner Garcia, Commissioner Morgan, Mr. Chair.
Here, uh, Item A is approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, April 5th, 2022. Item B is called for a meeting and set Tuesday, April 26, 2022, as a date for hearing on certified assessments and corrections. What's the will of the Board on Items A and B?
So moved for approval.
Motion by Commissioner Morgan, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Boyle. Uh, please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Item C is citizens' comments regarding the Board of Equalization. Are there any comments on Board of Equalization matters that are not listed on today's agenda?
Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. I want to speak about rules just briefly here. Last week, there was a, an occurrence of something that I think was out of order.
Larry, I'm actually to hold that to the board meeting, if you can.
Excuse me, but this is why I'm saying this, Chris, because last week, you let a gentleman get up here right now during Board of Equalization, talking about another topic.
Larry, listen to me.
He was not called out of order.
I'm gonna ask you to keep it to the board.
This is breaking the rule again, read your.
Larry, I'm gonna ask you to keep it to the board.
I guess I will have to sue you guys.
Okay, then do it, but I was just asking you to hold your comments.
You treated a gentleman differently than me last week.
Larry, this is my last.
You didn't interrupt him.
Hold this to the board meeting, thank you. Are there any comments on the Board of Equalization? Seeing none, we have resolutions D, E, and F. What's the will of the Board? Uh, motion by Commissioner Boyle to approve D, E, and F. There's a second by Commissioner Morgan. Please vote.
Is that including German?
Sorry, it does include in German.
Okay. Mr. Chair. Motion passes six to zero.
Note for the record that the Board of Corrections meeting scheduled for this, usually this week, will be postponed to the week of April 26. With that, we will call to order the Board of Commissioners meeting. Roll call.
Commissioner Borgerson is absent, Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Friend, Commissioner Garcia, Commissioner Morgan, Mr. Chair.
Here, Item 1 is minutes and claims. Letter A is approval of the minutes for the Douglas County Strategic Planning Meeting held on February, um, on Friday, April 1, 2022.
Uh, for those that, those on Zoom, please meet yourselves, thank you.
And Item B is approval of the claims submitted for payment process through Tuesday, April 19, 2022. What's the will of the Board?
So moved.
Motion by, motion by Commissioner Morgan, second by Commissioner Friend. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Um, we go to the consent agenda. You have before you an item that I'll ask to be added to consent agenda by emergency. The reason for the ask is, we don't do this now, it can't get approved in time, and it, and it seems, and it's a non-controversial item for, um, special designated license, it should be there. Uh, let me read that into the record before I ask, well, let me first ask for, is there a motion, see, motion to declare an emergency to add this item?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Morgan, second by Commissioner Friend. You ready, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Well, at, as Item H on the consent agenda, um, approval of special designated liquor license for, um, Patriotic Distillers LLC, 12251 Cary Circle Suite 100, um, Navisne, Nebraska, for a Nebraska Renaissance Fair to be held April 30th through May 1 of 2022 at 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. at the River West Park, 23301 West Maple Road, Nebraska. So that is what will be added as Item G, as the, as Item H on the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by Commissioner Friend, second by Commissioner Morgan. Seeing nothing. Um, please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Item 3, recognitions and proclamations. Uh, Item A is a recognition of the Douglas County Health Department National Public Health Week. Uh, let me note on there that this was, um, requested by myself and Commissioner Borgerson, and note, it was last week, but prior to the couple of years, I think it's probably always appropriate, uh, with the level of attention that's been raised to public health. Uh, we didn't do it last week because we didn't, we got it too late and then just, and it didn't justify our reason for emergency, plus didn't really want to get caught up in, um, the debate over the ordinance. So with that, our reading, then ask for a motion to approve. Says whereas the week of April 4th through 10th, 2022 was the National Public Health Week, with the theme of public health is where you are, and whereas since 1995, the American Public Health Association, through its sponsorship of National Public Health Week, has educated the public policymakers and public health professionals about issues important to improving the public's health, and whereas a person's health status can differ drastically by zip code due to differences in the built environment, environmental quality, community context, access to healthy food, access to education, and access to healthcare, and whereas public health professionals help communities prevent, prepare for, withstand, and recover from the impact of a full range of health threats, including disease outbreaks such as the COVID-19 pandemic, measles, natural disasters, and disease, disasters caused by human activity, and whereas public health action, together with scientific and techno, technological advances, has played a major role in reducing and in some cases, eliminating the spread of infectious disease, and in establishing today's disease surveillance and control system, and whereas public health professionals work tirelessly to assess the health of communities and implement policies, partnerships, and programs that assure the conditions in which communities can be healthy, and whereas public health seeks to eliminate health disparities and positively impact social determinants of health such as education, safe and affordable housing, food security, access to healthcare, and racism, and whereas the COVID-19 pandemic has illuminated and exacerbated racial inequities, and a growing number of local, state governments, and public health leaders have declared racism a public health crisis, and whereas public health has been performed at an extraordinary, extraordinary level under previously unknown pressures and scrutiny, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, that the Board of Commissioners does recognize the Douglas County Health Department for its outstanding year-round work this year and every year, and celebrates National Public Health Week. With that, I'd ask for a motion. Motion by Commissioner Boyle is their second. Second by Commissioner Morgan. Uh, Dr. Hughes, I see you on there. Would you like to say anything?
Yes, good morning, Commissioners, and thank you so much for this really beautiful proclamation honoring, um, all of the people who carry out public health in our community. As you can imagine, it's been a tough few years for us. Um, however, we are absolutely committed to continuing our work and making sure that we do everything possible to protect the citizens who live here, and I also just want to point out that public health does not happen in a vacuum. It's not just, um, those of us here at Douglas County Health Department who are, are working toward a healthier community. I also want to honor our fantastic community partners and stakeholders that work with us each and every day to accomplish the work, uh, that we're trying to get done, and this Board is certainly one of those partners, and I just want to thank you all for, um, just the support and, and the everything that you, you have done to support us over the past few years, um, and longer, and I know that we're going to have a great working relationship long into the future. So, thank you to you and to all of our partners as well, and to the employees of Douglas County Health Department. Um, there is no greater honor than serving on your team, and I just thank you so much for everything that you do every day. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hughes. Commissioner Boyle.
So just a couple of things. I, I also do think that public health is a, is a very critical part of what, what we do, and I'm, I'm glad that we actually have a real, a very solid department, and I think the other thing too is, you know, as far as the, the work that they do, we have to remember, uh, the COVID response, that was just the tip of the iceberg of the services that they provide. So not only do they do pandemic response, but also endemic response, but things more locally, you might notice that they do is also just track foodborne illness, STD prevention, so there are all kinds of other services that the department provides, and I think we can lose sight of that when, when, um, the, all of the, the hype is around the pandemic. And so I want to thank the work they do on the back end, and, um, another thing that was mentioned was social determinants of health. This happens also to be Black Maternal Health Week, so, um, I know that they're also critical in working, working with community partners to acknowledge some of the birth disparities that happen, uh, with, um, based on, on racial and socio-economic factors. So, so I appreciate everything that the Public Health Department does for Douglas County.
Thank you, Commissioner Boyle. Seeing nothing, there is a motion and a second. You come in on this, Larry?
Yes.
Come on.
Thank you. Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. Before you vote on this, I'd like you to think seriously about what I'm gonna say. I read this proclamation, and once again, I have to state that you are inserting tenants of critical race theory into this proclamation. You are accusing many citizens without naming them of continuing systemic racism. I don't need to read the whole thing here, but if you give me time, I'll, I'll point out the words to you. So I'd like you to have these revised and rewritten. I'm not against the general concept of the resolution, but to insert these words is illegal under the Constitution. It's continuing reverse systemic racism against other people, so you need to change it. The state and the city and county are reviewing such statements and various things for signs of racism. Somebody missed this. If you know who's guilty of this continued systemic racism, et cetera, then you should name them, you should cite them, and have them arrested. So please, before you say yes to this resolution, send it back, bring it back as an amendment, as you and the City Council often do, after a public vote, that changes things, and the public doesn't get a comment on that. Thank you. Would you care me to read, would you allow me to read the words that I object to?
You have three minutes to say whatever you want to say on the topic.
All right. Uh, sometimes it's hard to hear you, uh, but I think if you look at, oh, about the fifth or sixth sentence down, health disparities, that's one of the words. Social determinants, that's another. Affordable housing, food security, et cetera. Racial inequalities, have declared racism, and under previously unknown pressures and scrutiny. This is, uh, this is just way out of whack, and you need to eliminate those and rephrase them. Thank you.
Anyone else? Let me just say for the record, critical race serious, theory has nothing to do with public health. With that, uh, please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Um, we'll go to Item 4, and that's citizens' comments for, uh, the Board of Correction, I mean, Board of Commissioners. If there are any individuals that would like to make comments on an item not listed on the Board of Commissioners' agenda that's referenced to the Board of Commissioners, please come at this time. Larry, this is your chance.
Me again, Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska. Once again, I am issuing, as I tried to last week, a formal complaint before you, but you would not hear it, violations of the intent of the Open Meetings Act. This needs to be a citywide discussion with the involvement of the Douglas County Attorney and the Attorney General of State of Nebraska. Pardon my tone of voice, but last week, I was a few minutes late. I walked in here, there was nothing outside that says your meeting has a Board of, uh, Equalization rather than Board of Commissioners. There was a gentleman that is a friend of mine that was speaking at the time that I walked in, he should have been declared out of order and interrupted like you just did me, and told to sit down until a Board of Commissioners was meeting. When I tried to object to that later, I was more or less escorted out. These are serious violations of a citizen's right to petition his government. And then again, this morning, it happened. So there are two violations, probably, uh, under the Open Meetings Act. We need to have the advice of the county attorney and, and Attorney General in terms of whether that is or is not a violation of the intent of the Open Meetings Act. When I asked a few years ago, maybe, well, maybe only a year, of Doug Peterson at a meeting in front of a lot of people, what the intent of the act and who is it for, he implied to us that it was for the citizens to be able to petition their government, but you people don't think so. The other topic is the emergency order. Adolf Hitler took over Germany through emergency orders. That again is unconstitutional, probably. The people don't get a vote. Somebody else is making those decisions. Who are writing these things for you? It's not us. We didn't ask you to do it. So let's stop this legislating by illegal declarations of emergency. Thank you.
Morning Commissioners, Kim Havakati, Deputy County Administrator over our juvenile justice reform efforts. This is not on the agenda, but I wanted to make everybody aware, including the public, that as of this morning, we did a media release, and we have a survey available in our community that we really need to hear from our youth and families in our community, in order for us to proceed forward and ensuring we have the right programs and services available, and to help guide all of us in the allotment of funds on our grants. We now have a survey available on our website for youth and families. We have community connectors that will be doing it within the community. This survey has been also downloaded into five different languages, so languages should not be an issue, and I appreciate the time just to make it aware that this survey is now operational, and we really need to hear from all the youth and families. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll go on to Item 6 in this public hearing. Item A is a public hearing for Class C dash 124819, license for beer, wine, and steel spirits, on and off sale for Ovations Hartwood LLC, doing business as Ovation Hartwood Preserve, 471 Maxwell Plaza, Omaha, Nebraska, 68154. Um, with that, we will open the public hearing on Item A.
I'm not the public part. I'm Stephanie Grade, I'm with Ovation Hartwood Preserve, 6809 Beth Avenue, Papillion, Nebraska, 68133. So I will wait. Oh, sorry. I'm Stephanie Grade, I'm actually the manager of application. So 6809 Beth Avenue, Papillion, Nebraska, 68154. I'm just here to answer any questions that you may have.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Anyone else want, go ahead, Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. Stephanie, what's your last name?
Grade.
Thanks for coming down.
Absolutely.
Just a quick question, and this is from my geography lesson for the day.
Yeah.
Where is 471 Maxwell Plaza?
Do you remember where the Boys Town West Farm was, that new development that's going up, Hartwood Preserve?
Okay, so what would be like the main cross street?
So it's close, it's just north to 150th and Pacific, so just northwest of Millard North High School, just south of Onyx and the new Valmont.
Okay, and this is gonna be a bar?
This is a senior living community, so it's an upscale senior living community that does have a lounge in it.
Very nice, and the, the name of that community is Overland Heartland Preserve?
No, Ovation Hartwood Preserve.
Ovation Hartland.
Yes.
Great. Is it open now?
We are close to open. No, so we, we are waiting for our license on our assisted living and memory care as of today, so any minute, and then our independent living, we look to have open next month.
Very good, and, um, what's the capacity?
So 300. We have 150 apartments and independent living, and then 150 within our assisted living and memory care component.
Sounds great, I look forward to seeing that.
Yeah, we're super excited, um, so, yeah. We look forward to inviting you all.
Good luck.
Yeah, thank you.
This is public hearing. Anybody else want to make comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. What's the will of the Board?
Moved for approval.
Motion by Commissioner Morgan, second by Commissioner Boyle. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Item A, um, under Number 7 Committee Discussions. Item 1 is the budget report, I'm assuming that is as presented.
Correct.
Uh, we'll go to Item 2, and ARPA funding, approval of a resolution authorizing an award of $50,000 to, um, the Omaha Healthy Kids Alliance for a program which will provide healthy homes, educations, and resources to an at-risk group, uh, for health issues due to the conditions of their home, and $50,000 to Generation Diamond Corporation for a program which provides food, clothing, temporary shelter, job training, cleanup facility, and mental health referrals for people facing the challenges of homelessness. Commissioner Garcia, I'm assuming these are yours?
Yep.
Would you want to go?
Very briefly, uh, both of these proposals have gone through the ARPA Committee and also the Deloitte Review, and have been approved by Deloitte, um, for ARPA usage. As mentioned, the Omaha Healthy Kids Alliance Program will provide, uh, education programming for disease arising from substandard housing conditions. One of those main issues that they address are lead exposure and excess of lead, especially in East Omaha, and in those qualified census tracts, uh, that are found and overlapping in East Omaha. Also, um, one of the diseases that arises from that exposure is of course asthma, and asthma, of course, is not something good to have when it comes to COVID and the pandemic. So both of those are tied, and, um, outreach and education related to lead is actually, uh, within ARPA provision, so that's the tie there. Uh, the second one, from Generation Diamond, helps individuals who are homeless or near homelessness, also individuals who are going through reentry into society, coming out of incarceration, with employment assistance, with a day center to go in somewhere safe, somewhere to receive case management, somewhere to be safe, uh, if they are indeed homeless. So, uh, the details are in both proposals that you have a copy of, so I would move to approve both. Um, just for the record, we do have reps from both agencies in case there are any questions, but with that, I move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Garcia, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Kavanaugh. Um, no questions from the Board. Um, if any of the organizations would like to say something briefly, you can now.
Hi, I'm Shamari Huggins, uh, with Omaha Healthy Kids Alliance, and I want to say thank you, uh, to the Commissioners, um, as we continue to work to improve the built environments of, of houses for families and children. So just thank you, and we hope to continue to make Omaha safer and just a better community overall. So thank you.
Thank you. Um, anyone else from Generation Diamond?
Hi, good morning. My name is Blanca Mejia. I am the founder of Generation Diamond. I want to thank you also for the opportunity, and with these funds, while we always, we try to make sure that people in the reentry program, they stay in the community to doing something good for us, for everybody, and also prevent homeless, homelessness, that way people, they have something to eat, uh, to take a shower, to get a state ID and everything, to make sure that we have a safety community. And once again, thank you so much for the opportunity.
Thank you. There is a motion and a second, please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
We'll go to, uh, Letter G, Human Resources. Item 1 is the weekly personnel report from civil service, and that is as submitted. Item 2 Legislative Issues, there's just two things to update the Board on. So everybody knows we're in the waning days of the session, and it's been late nights and furious. I'm sad to say, as of a note handed to me this morning, that LR 263, the Constitutional Amendment by Senator Blood, which had to do with county mandates, um, has been taken off the calendar. I think the Speaker declared that because of the late night, and it was on yesterday, they don't have the time to do that, so, um, that's, that's sad to, to hear, but that has been taken off the calendar. Um, added, but just to update also with LB 921 and 922, which were combined into, uh, one bill, um, that has to do with the 18th judge here at the, uh, in Douglas County, and also, um, a bill relating to reimbursement of $100 a day for, um, I think, mental health-related inmates that will sit in the jail. Um, that, both on final and the reading for them are tomorrow. Anything you want to fill in with Marcos that I did?
Do I have this on, oh, Marcus Martin. Um, yeah, Commissioner, so two different bills, it was, it's LB 921 and LB 922, and yes, both of those bills have had, um, other bills blended into them, um, but what we are in particular looking at is the reimbursement for, um, the $100 reimbursement, um, that you, you stated, and then also the Medicaid, um, enrollment, um, that's, that's also part of those bills. Um, but yeah, we're looking at 921 and 922, and then obviously the 18th judge.
Thank you. Um, seeing nothing from the Board, that's all we have legislatively. We do got a need for executive session for the purpose of union negotiations, litigation, and legal services. Is that all? Legal advice, sorry. Um, looking, yes, that's all. With that, uh, I'd ask for a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of union negotiations, litigation, and legal advice. Yes, sir, you want to comment? Uh, come on.
Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. You might think this was unrelated, but it is not. I'm going to refer back to Item Number 2 under Finance Committee. Uh, I believe that is a violation of the equal protection clause of the United States Constitution, but I'm objecting basically because last night, there was a story on the news about an entire apartment building where people were, without any notice, invaded and chased out of their, yes, quite rundown building. Are they getting some of this money? Is that a different group of people that you're treating differently than the group of people discussed in ARPA? Just because we have problems with our house doesn't necessarily mean we get public funding. How many people, citizens in this city, county, are not getting public funding? How many with asthma are not getting help? These people are. Is that equal treatment under the Constitution of the United States, or any of the laws that we're supposed to honor, uh, under that interpretation? Equal protection. Where is it? Thank you.
Thank you. Again, um, do we have a motion and a second for that? Okay, um, okay, is there a motion and a second to go into executive session by, motion by Commissioner Morgan, second by Commissioner Friend. Again, we're going in for union negotiations, litigation, and legal advice. Uh, please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.